All right, thank you. We'll call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Hayer?
Here.
Mrs. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Catalina?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Here.
Mrs. Crane?
Here.
Mr. Nead?
Here.
Mrs. Horst?
Here. This meeting is a meeting in public of the Board of Education and is not to be considered a public or for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community hearing. There is time for public participation during the meetings indicated in Agenda Items Three and Nine. Item Two is approval of the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board approves the Consent Agenda.
Support.
Are there any questions or comments on the Consent Agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item Three is citizens' requests to address the Board. You are given two opportunities to address the Board. Under Item 3.1, you can request to address the Board about any topic that's on tonight's agenda. Mrs. McLean is now displaying tonight's agenda on your screen for those attending via Zoom. And under Item Nine, you are welcome to address the Board on any topic. When making comments, please state your name and then direct your comments to Mrs. Kelly Horst, President, Clarkston Board of Education. So I'll give you just a moment to look at the agenda and then indicate if you would like to address the Board about any topic that's on tonight's agenda. Now is the time to do so. So please remember our process, that if you wish to address the Board on any topic that's on tonight's agenda, you click on the Participants button if you're attending by Zoom and then, and click the Raise Hand feature. And I'm looking, I am not seeing anyone at this moment who wishes to address the Board on any topic that's on tonight's agenda. And I know we have one citizen attending in person tonight who's indicated that she would like to address us when we get to Item Nine. So thank you, we have your name. Okay, we'll continue with our agenda and obviously, for those of you attending by Zoom, if you would like to address us as the meeting goes on, there will be ample time for you when we get to Item Nine. Item Four is Superintendent Update. Dr. Ryan?
Thank you, President Horst. Some of the big picture items, it's been a pretty active week in our continuing saga with respect to COVID, our community and our school district. And as far as the numbers overall, as I think many are aware of, that we've continued to see a pretty dramatic decrease in the overall number of cases in Michigan, in Oakland County, and in the Clarkston area over the last several weeks. Can you hear me okay? And along with that, we've experienced downward pressure on the overall number of quarantines and the number of students that we've had to put out of school as far as contact tracing. I believe that this is coinciding with the state of Michigan's response specifically around the number of days of quarantining, which since our last meeting went from fourteen to ten days, which is again, good pressure to help support keeping kids in school. And with the loosening of restrictions of mask-wearing outside, we were able to capitalize on that so that now, this past week, our elementary students began, we could go Wednesday, of having recesses outside without masks. And it might seem like a small detail, but I would ask the people in our, in our room, and I appreciate enough from the audience, if you remember back to yourself how important recess is, think of yourself not through your adult eyes, but through your eyes as a child, or your eyes through your children. The reports, what I had back from students as they went onto the playgrounds, it was almost like that they had found a sense of new freedom going outside. It was a very beautiful thing that I wanted to make sure was not lost on the community. Because a lot of times, I know, as I exchange and put forth information, month after month, week after week, sometimes we get, we lose some of the finer details of how it translates into human beings. This was a huge week. These, this restriction is going to make a big difference. And along with it, the Michigan Department of Public Health has also loosened its, at least its statewide restrictions on quarantine and contact tracing. And I'm anticipating, and I've put two inquiries since Friday out to our local health department in terms of trying to get responses as far as their guidance and how they're going to translate this change in position from the Michigan Department of Public Health, and they are evaluating it right now. So I'm not sure exactly where that stands because they just officially actually came out with recess today and I took the liberty to evaluate that with our team here in Clarkston to see that it was consistent with what had been put out from the health department at the state level. So looking what has already happened on the west side of the state with some loosening of that, those restrictions by the independent individual health departments, I'm anticipating, but cannot, don't have any collective insights or special knowledge, that Oakland County at some point will follow suit. Our numbers, as you trace with the other communities across Michigan have found that downward trend. And I guess I would anticipate that that would be something that we're going to see this week. And I'll do my best and my weekly communications out, obviously, to our Board of Education and our community to keep you abreast of those changes. We're going to continue step by step, you know? I want to say, you know, it's because of recess and things, it feels like it's over. It's definitely not over, but number of people being vaccinated has increased, although slowing. And I feel like that we're going to continue to move towards a greater and greater position of what I'll call normalcy, whatever that means anymore in 2021. And it's my hope, as I speak to our community tonight, that as we go into the fall, with now a broadening, I believe today, of opening vac stations to middle school through high school students across the country, that we're going to see a fairly hopefully normal start to the school year this fall. That is my intent hope. I believe that's the probability of our situation right now. But we have to keep vigilant because of variants and all other type of things that could be out there that could influence us in a negative way. But I'm very hopeful that we're going to be on to a strong start of this fall. And that'll coincide with our major push to bring our students back up because I want our community to hear that Clarkston has not been sitting on its hands over the last couple of months waiting for the pandemic to end. Quite the contrary, I feel like we've taken a very direct and forward-thinking stance with our Equity Plan and what we want to invest in students across this district. And I'm very hopeful over the next couple of years, not only will we get to a sense of normalcy, but we'll maintain that sense of excellence, you know, as we push forward. And I'm very excited to see how this is all going to kind of transcend. I know with a mask, you can't see me smiling, but I am because I'm excited about the future here in Clarkston. Some more along the lines of specific celebrations this week, turning away from COVID, if you indulge me, is I want to recognize Justin Harris. He was named the MSBOA District Four Teacher of the Year, okay? This is for music and band teachers across this state. And of eighty public and parochial and private schools, he is the Teacher of the Year and he's from Clarkston. So I just want that recognized that, you know, in the arts, we like to look to our athletics, but we're just as strong and stronger in seeing all the excellence that we have in, in the arts as well. Additionally, today, I had the pleasure, and this will kind of transcend into our, our first official agenda item here. This is the last thing I have today, but I'm so proud that I want to make sure that it's not lost publicly, is we had Military Signing Day today at Clarkston High School. And talk about pride as a superintendent, to see our students, seven of which, take their enlistments here publicly in front of their parents and some of their classmates. And obviously, because of COVID, it was kind of whittled down a little bit from what we've had in previous years. But we had guest speaker, who was Major Brian Weiss, who is going to be very soon Lieutenant Colonel Brian Weiss. Amazing speaker, looking at the realities and importance of service greater than unto oneself. It was inspiring to listen to him speak. And it wasn't full of saying, you know, join the military because it's going to be fun. He said quite the opposite, that it was going to be about self-sacrifice. And at the end of the day, at the end of those years, that you'd made a difference. And I like the notion that, you know, we can be bigger ourselves and make a difference. And I was inspired by him and also by those seven students who I will name. We had Chloe Case, who was inducted into the Army today. Tessa Goss was inducted to the Air Force. Anna Hillman into the Army Reserves and ROTC. Gavin Waltrip into the US Navy. Brock Roder into the US Army. Andrew Stark into the US Marine Corps. And Paige Workman, Army ROTC at Central Michigan University, which is getting three or four years upfront paid for by the US Army for part of her service and a stipend as she goes on to provide service for our country. I was very, very, very excited to be part and be able to listen in and to see the pride on the families and the students and how they represent Clarkston, our school district and our community. It was quite great to see. And we actually have Captain Thomas Frain from our local recruiting station here. To say, to introduce him and one of his team members to the Board tonight, just to say a couple of words. So that's kind of the extent of my update, but it kind of all fit together today as a really important day. Thank you, President Horst.
Sure. Absolutely. Let's, let's move right into that then. Our presentation tonight is the introduction of Captain Frain. So Dr. Ryan, I'll, I'll go ahead and allow you to, to keep rolling.
Thank you. Cap Frain, if you'd like to come up, approach up to the podium here. Colleague and like to introduce and say a couple of words.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent. Appreciate the opportunity for, to allow us to come out and have a quick conversation. I was present this afternoon at the, at the honorary member, the ceremony they had today at Clarkston High School. A phenomenal opportunity to welcome the newest members of the, of the military and say a few words to a couple of individuals as they move forward with their service to the country. With me tonight, I have my senior listed advisor, Sonar First Class Waters. And I wanted to take some time and just introduce the leadership for the Pontiac Recruiting Company. That's myself and First Sonar Waters. We are here. I'm the commander of the company that oversees five stations in the Pontiac, Flint, Madison Heights, and White Lake areas. Anytime, you will see our recruiters out and about in the community knocking on doors. As we transition, as the Superintendent mentioned, as we start to see a reduction in COVID, you will see recruiters attempt to start getting schools and get in front of students in order to ensure that we can maintain our all-volunteer army. Additionally, there was an incident a few weeks back and I wanted to take a couple of minutes and explain some of our processes. I will let my senior listed advisor go through those processes specifically so that parents can understand what they can expect from our recruiters, if they knock on their door or if they encounter them in the community. Plus, a couple of things that we've done to make sure that we don't have another misstep as we had earlier. Sonar Waters?
Thank you for this opportunity to come and speak. First and foremost, pertaining to the, the issue that we had a couple of weeks ago, just to make sure that the, the community of Clarkston understands that there are very strict guidelines and regulations that pertain to how we recruit and what we are allowed to do. And first and foremost, everything in the Army's acronyms, we have an acronym, Apple MDT. It's our pre-qualification regulations and rules. And the first one there is age. So obviously, understanding the age of the individual that was approached. Once the recruiter identified or would have identified that individual's name, we would cease all contact. Probably give her a, a pin or a lanyard or some Army swag and then, you know, thank her and move on to, to the next one that hopefully would meet the requirements. But we don't actively, we are not allowed to actively recruit anybody under eight, under the age of seventeen. So I think that was the, the big question that everybody asked and obviously, the way that it, the way that it was perceived, lended itself to question. But really, just want to make sure that we open ourselves up to questions. We are going to be within the community. The Army, the Army is constantly evolving. Whether our area of operation is in Afghanistan, doing a humanitarian aid mission in Africa, or recruiting in the state of Michigan during a pandemic, we're constantly having to evolve and come up and create new methods to help us maintain, as Captain Frain said, an all-volunteer army. Just because we're dealing with a pandemic, that doesn't change the fact that we still need to recruit willing individuals into our Army. So the recruiters are going to be out, they're going to be engaged, they are uniformed. We don't, we don't allow recruiters to recruit in civilian attire unless it's Army branded. But they are going to be within the community. And I think the big thing that we discussed last week was just to make sure that the Clarkston community is aware that we are in the area, who is in the area, and the message that they're, that they're sharing with, with the population of Clarkston. Depending on your guys' questions, I just want to make sure that we provide like complete transparency.
Just for record, there are references just being made, we wanted, we had a misidentification of one of the recruiters and we were able to kind of clarify that. And then afterwards, I myself met with both commander, with Ms. Rowe, and we continue to compare notes on how we can make sure that we keep strong communication ties so that we know where everybody's at and we can keep everybody safe and informed. So I appreciate your willingness to meet with me and to be able to discuss that further. So thank you. Yeah, thank you. If there's any questions from the Board?
I know if we have questions from the Board, just thank you so much for coming and we're so happy to have you here in Clarkston. And, you know, so many of us have military connections and, and we thank you for your service. And I know at our, our graduation, when we recognize the students who are going on to serve in our military, I mean, it's the loudest, most proud recognition and applause that those students get. And having attended our Military Signing Day in the past, it's just a, a moment of great pride and emotion for all of us as Board members and, and for our students and families. And so we're just appreciative, appreciative of, of your service and for our students who go on to serve in the military. So thank you very much for coming here tonight and saying hello to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, trustees, we'll move on to our action items and we have a, a list here this evening. Item 6.1 is approval of the Equity Plan. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the District Equity Plan as presented.
Support.
Any additional questions or discussion? We have Mrs. Mahoney here who presented the plan to us last week. And I just wonder if there were any additional questions presented to you or anything else you wanted to share with us before we voted this evening? Very excited. Okay?
President Horst?
Mrs. McGinnis?
I would just like to say, based on some communication I know the Board has seen from community members, that I'm, having had a child who is dyslexic and having paid for private tutoring in Orton-Gillingham, I do see, see the strong connection between academic achievement and the use of Orton-Gillingham. So I, I desire to see our administration continue to evaluate the methodologies that we use for our students. And I'm sure that what we are, hard to talk with these masks, going to do is find those methodologies that work for each individual student, not necessarily all students across the Board. But I can say that my son went from Es to As only because of Orton-Gillingham. So I strongly support the use of Orton-Gillingham and the multi-sensory technolit, or multi-sensory purposes of how Orton-Gillingham is delivered. And I appreciate those community members reaching out to us to share their point of view.
Thank you, Mrs. McGinnis. Our literacy coaches just went through extensive training, thirty hours of Orton-Gillingham, and we plan to continue that professional learning with our interventionist team to support. And I think it's very important, and you highlighted that, is that we're responsive to each child as a individual in terms of where they are at and the support that they need. And we want to be definitely student-responsive as we move forward.
Yep. Ms. Mahoney and the team were helping increase that overall toolbox. So Orton-Gillingham is, is in our arsenal along with several others so that we can find the right match for the right kiddo.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6.2 is approval of personnel changes. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the personnel changes as listed on the attached sheets as presented.
Any questions or discussion?
I, I just wanted to comment that seeing all the MA-16s on the retirement list and seeing the names next to them are all people that are going to be significant holes in terms of their departure to the community. And I think we have a great, a great staff, but there are certainly a bunch of folks on here that are going to be missed.
Most definitely. It was quite shocking, I think, to me to see some of those names. My son, who's a senior this year, has one of these teachers right now and he said, they had quite an emotional discussion in class. He said, "This is the last government class I'll ever teach." And it was quite an emotional, quite an emotional moment. So there certainly is going to be, there's a, there's a huge knowledge base right there in that, in that subtraction column and that was, that was pretty tough to read. Although I know Mr. Lucido is going to do an excellent job filling it with a lot of energetic young talent. But this is a huge base that has served Clarkston very, very well for us here on this, on this personnel report.
President Horst, I would agree, having been a thirty-seven-year resident now of Clarkston Schools, all three of my children have graduated and long since gone on to their professional careers and one is a special education teacher because of the teachers here in Clarkston. Several of these teachers were my children's elementary teachers, math teachers, and so on and so forth. So I know John's got his hands full filling these positions and I commend these teachers for the service they provided our district over these years, especially these last, this last year and a half during this difficult time. And I personally am going to miss seeing them too. Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6.3 is approval of improvements to the Sashaba Middle School track.
I move the Board of Education approve the construction contract for the construction of an exterior running track at Sashaba Middle School in the amount of $208,500 with a contingency set aside in the amount of $24,149 for a total recommendation of $232,649 as presented.
Support.
And thank you, Mrs. McLean and Mr. Goodman for adding, you know, some architectural renderings in there. And so for members of our community and certainly parents at the middle school who may be looking at this, I had asked, you know, Mr. Goodman to kind of clarify that for us, that this run, this track will lay parallel to maybe road? Kind of in front of, I guess, Sashaba and behind the church. Is that, am I describing that correctly? I'm getting a nod, yes. Okay. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions or discussion on the construction of the track at the Sashaba Middle School? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6.4 is approval of the new well pump at Bailey Lake Elementary. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the well improvements at Bailey Lake Elementary to Mills Merchant, Mills Mechanical in the amount of $115,000 and Wade's Electric Company in the amount of $6,299. We also have a set, a contingency in the amount of $14,505 for a total recommendation of $135,804.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6.5 is, is approval of the construction change order. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the construction change order in Bulletin 27 at Clarkston Elementary School to Tech Mechanical in the amount of $26,159.
Support. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. And Mr. Goodman, thank you so much. You detail all of this so well and so clearly for us. So I just want to thank you very much clearly. I, I think it's obvious as, as easily as this is for us to digest. So I appreciate the time that you and the Ock team and everyone takes in, in putting this in such great detail in the packet for us. Thank you very much. Item 6.6 is approval of proclamation regarding May as Mental Health Awareness Month. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the attached proclamation regarding May as Mental Health Awareness Month as presented.
Support.
A request for this came to, came to the Board via me from the Oakland Community Health Network a short time ago. And so obviously, with social, emotional health as one of the pillars of our strategic plan and what we do, I had asked Ms. Puzio to review this and, and make sure that the language in it and, and the tenants of it were aligned with what we are already doing here. And, and she approved, she approved it and said that it was. And so I felt that it would, just a good partnership and a, and a good gesture for us to, to consider this tonight. So that's why it's in our packet. And are there any questions or discussion about the proclamation?
Would require a roll call vote. It would require a roll call vote.
Roll call vote for proclamation, sorry. Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Nead?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Hayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item Seven is report items. We have none tonight. Item Eight is discussion items. Eight. One is the first reading of policies. And I will ask Mrs. Crane to summarize. Obviously, we have a lot of policies put in front of us tonight.
As you read through these, most of these were, were additions to bring us in line with current laws. And as Mr. Hayer and I are the policy committee, we looked at each one on, in the packet and looked at what we currently had for the revised ones to make sure they were still in line with what we, our visions and our goals. And so what you have in front of you was the result of that.
Were there any questions or comments for the policy committee? I mean, as I read through them, it didn't seem like there were any real ideological debates. It was more just what was keeping current with the law and, and so Option A or Option B, just some checks like, like that.
Sometimes people, the people had changed since we had last updated the policy, but not much more than that.
Okay. And I think there was one housekeeping item to point out for the Board on page 114 of your packet. It's part of Policy 744001. There had been a box checked and then no was written next to it. So I think we just wanted to clarify that the no is actually the correct notation, that, that, that is not an item that, that is included.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, so it doesn't sound like there are any questions or concerns about what the policy committee has presented here tonight. So we'll bring those back for second reading and approval at our next meeting. Certainly, if there are any, any questions that come up in the interim, just please email Mrs. Crane and myself. All right, thank you so much for your work on that. Those were, that was a lot of reading over the weekend. I appreciate the time that you guys invested in policy updates. Item Nine is citizen comments. Citizens are welcome to address the Board on any topic at this point on the agenda. And I know we have one citizen with us in the boardroom tonight. That's Vera, that's a nice change. Welcome back to the boardroom. And we will see if there are any citizens joining us on Zoom tonight who wish to address the Board. Now is the time to indicate your interest in doing so. Same procedure I outlined earlier, just please click on the Participants button and the Raise Hand feature. And so Jennifer, if you want to make your way to the podium, you'll just state your name and you'll have two minutes to address the Board.
First and foremost, I would like to thank our military members as well for your service. It's amazing.
And just speak right into the microphone so we can hear you.
I'm sure, guys.
Pull it down. There you go.
My name is Jennifer Norton. I'm actually a prior employee. I'm a parent in the district to a second grader and a seventh grader. I'm here tonight not to yell at you, not to be one of those crazy parents. I am so excited, you said that, about the kids and the recess. It, it made such a big difference for my son. I can't even explain to you. My son is a special needs student at Pine Knob. It, it's insane how much of a difference just taking the mask off at recess has made for him. And I'd love for this district to keep going with your policies in the correct direction. I'm here basically, the ten-minute rule for secondary students without their lockers is causing harm to my child and many others that I've heard. The ten minutes, I understand, we don't want the kids congregating and it can be an issue. However, it's actually having the exact opposite effect. I, all of these children are telling me, "No, we get ten minutes to laugh and play with our friends." They, instead of having seven minutes to stop at their locker, do what they need to do and go back to class. My daughter's backpack was twenty-six pounds last night, you guys. She is now seeing a chiropractor. It is costing me a fortune and it is hurting her. I am asking you, please, take a look at this policy. I understand that the teachers are cleaning between classrooms and that's important, I get it. But the CDC, who, local health departments, I even called Oakland County today just to make sure, have all said the risk of transmission of COVID-19, being on surfaces and actually transmitting the virus is next to nil if nonexistent. I understand that the teachers' cleaning practices are fantastic. Don't get me wrong, I was a para, I love cleaning, by all means. But to have this ten minutes, to deprive the kids of their lockers, it's hurting them. My, my daughter literally walks around with a heating pack on her back now. You guys, she's twelve. She is a twelve-year-old child and she is popping and cracking like a sixty-year-old man who never took care of himself. took care of himself. The chiropractor looked at her x-rays and she's going to have at least a year's worth of treatment on her back now. This is not something I did to my child, but this policy did. And I don't for one minute think that you would have done this on purpose, but I'm begging you, absolutely begging you at this point, and I'm sorry if I get emotional, please, if we're going to go the whole child approach, please think about removing this policy. I know that there's a $100 stipend for the teachers as long as they clean once a quarter. I understand all of this. And I know that the teachers feel better if they clean. Cool, go for it. I think it's great. But the 10 minutes and the no lockers. I understand, my daughter said, or I talked to the principal at the middle school, she told me that the kids can put their backpacks right outside the classrooms. Not very safe. I mean, not even just for the expensive stuff like cell phones and whatever, but just their homework. My daughter's homework went missing. It's not a safe thing, and they deserve a spot to put their things. My second grader has a locker. If you've ever dealt with second graders like I have, I mean, I worked in the schools, I worked in the special ed department. The second graders are gross. I mean, they're just not there at their hygiene level. My seventh grader, however, she's perfectly fine with washing her hands, wearing her mask, and taking proper precautions. The older children are more capable than the younger ones, yet the younger ones get the lockers and the older ones don't. It is hurting my child, it is hurting many others that I've heard of. I'm not, again, here to yell at you, I'm not some crazy person screaming about masks and I have something you guys can do about it. I'm, it's not that. I just, I want my daughter's back to be okay. I want kids to not get yelled at in the hallways as they're being made to make laps around the building. The seventh graders at the middle school must continue to move. The teachers stand outside the doorways and tell them, "Keep moving, keep moving, keep moving. Oh, wait, go to class, go to class, go to class." It also creates a mental issue for them. It's hard on them. I'm emotional because I care. I have invested so much time and energy into this district, I can't even, I love Clarkston. I mean, I'm literally out in the garb right now. I go to everything, I do everything with these kids. I support the district, I love our teachers, but I honestly, I don't care about their $100. I don't care about any of that. I care about the health and safety of the kids, and this is hurting them. I'm just, please help them. That's literally, just please, just think about this policy. It's hurting them.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great, I have one parent, Mrs. McLean, online, Hillary Kubler.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, great, thank you so much. If you'll state your name and you have two minutes to address the Board.
Sure, my name's Hillary Kubler, I'm a parent of four children in the Clarkston Community Schools, one of them who happens to be dyslexic. I know I've communicated with several of you over the last couple of years on this issue. I just wanted to mention, in your recent comments just earlier, you said there's getting children, getting every child what they need. And that every child needs to be taught how to read following the science of reading. There's a body of research, tens of thousands of studies, it's been well documented what the science of reading is. And I personally believe that Clarkston advertises a balanced literacy program, it's on their district website, and the evidence is now showing us that perhaps it's time to take a different direction and follow the science of how every child learns to read. Whether they need more intervention services based on a learning disability is another discussion, and I'm glad to see that Clarkston is investing in programs like Orton Gillingham to help students even further that are struggling. But all K through 3 students need to be taught using the science of reading, and all K-3 teachers need to be, need some comprehensive professional development. And then interventions can continue on in a much more strategic way for students that have learning challenges. I just wanted to add those comments to the meeting. I believe that we are moving in the right direction in this district, but I still believe that all K through 3 needs to be looked at. So thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you so much for your comments tonight. I don't see anyone else at this time who wishes to address the Board, so I appreciate those of you who spoke to us tonight. We'll move on to item 10, information items. Our next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 24. We'll be back here in the boardroom in person at 6:00 PM and obviously via Zoom. We'll have our public tax hearing followed by our regular meeting. Item 11 is adjournment. May I have a motion, please?
I move to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.